Members of the City Council, please attend the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM Tuesday, June 9, 2015, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Edmonds? Mr. Meeks? Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons? Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Brandon?
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. We have two items on your work session agenda tonight. The first is an update on the golf operation. The other is the PER Properties Item Use Permit that's on your agenda tonight. You recall that back during the budget development, we talked about coming back to you with an update on the golf operation and the fund. And so this presentation tonight will give you some background on that, let you know how the fund is performing. And even though it's by no means self-sufficient, the golf fund has made some improvement over the last year due to the changes that we've done in the operation. So Nita is going to highlight the background, those changes that we've made to the fund, and also talk a little bit about the item that's on your agenda tonight to appropriate additional funds in this fiscal year for the golf fund, and then wrap up with some recommendations that we can make to further improve the balance of revenue and expenditure on the golf fund. So, Nita, if you take away.
Thank you very much, Brandon. Appreciate it. Mayor, council members, for the golf update, I'm going to cover with you a brief history of the golf courses, the debt service, as well as go over last year's, this year's, and then next year's financial performance. And then finally, to talk with you about the HAM study that was conducted in 2011. And look at those recommendations we presented. First, the history. You have in 1859, which I don't think a lot of people are aware of, between 1859 and 1920, the cities made quite a few purchases. Bydaway was actually purchased in 1859. There were a couple of tracts of land purchased and then sold off, and the city kept the 40 acres, which we now know as Bydaway. The Olive Branch Farm was purchased in 1918. And then, once we began purchasing water rights and actually the watershed in Suffolk in 1920, we acquired the property for the Suffolk Golf Course. In 1949, we actually reached an agreement with Suffolk because of the fact that when we purchased the water rights, we created a dam that flooded out the Suffolk Golf Course. So we had an agreement with Suffolk that they could actually build a course on our watershed, and we would lease that to them from 1949 until 1997 for $5 a year. And item number five in 1955 was when we actually leased the property that's now Bydaway over to Chandler Harper, and the Bydaway Golf Course was constructed, and we bought Sleepy Hole in 1966. The next set of events were actually very major events for the city of Portsmouth in the term, in terms of golf. In 1988, Bydaway was integrated, and in 1998, we actually secured revenue bonds for, we went out with revenue bonds, $9 million for Bydaway and City Park. We entered into a new 10-year lease contract with the city of Suffolk for that golf course, and a new contract with the Bydaway Pro. With the city of Suffolk contract, it's very interesting after doing that research, we charged the city of Suffolk over a period of 10 years, $130,000 the first year, up to $242,000 at the 10th year. In addition to that, in the contract, we required Suffolk to make $600,000 worth of capital improvements for the first four years, and an additional $675,000 in capital improvements for the remaining six years. That contract expired in 2007. They had the right to renew that contract in 2007, and the terms of the renewal meant that they would have to pay $242,000 at the beginning of the 11th year, and that rent would increase based on a particular index through the next 10 years. And Suffolk would have to had, provided another $1 million in capital improvements between 2007 and 2017. So between 1997 and 2007, it went from a nine-hole to an 18-hole golf course. They built the facilities there. And so they had, in that contract with the city of Portsmouth, it was very, it was a very, very good contract in terms of building up that golf course. So that was an investment made by the city of Suffolk. They did not renew that contract. We sold Sleepy Hole Golf Course in 2002, and we had sold a part back to Suffolk just prior to that. And again, the city of Suffolk did not renew their lease in 2007. We entered into a new contract with LEL Management in 2007. Their contract was significantly different than the Suffolk contract. Their first-year lease was for only $60,000, and over that period of five years, it increased to $100,000. In addition to that, they were, they were to provide 10% of gross revenues over $900,000. That contract was renewed in 2012, and it expires in 2017 with the exact same terms and conditions as they had initially. But there was one other caveat. In 2013, they made maintenance repairs, and so their rent was waived. Was there a question?
In '13?
In '13, in 2013.
What kind of repairs did they make?
They actually put down some asphalt on the cart paths as needed. They, they made some improvements to the greens, and it was just a few small other items, but their rent was waived for that month, so, for that year, for 2013.
Okay, so how much?
Go ahead, sir.
How much money, because when I looked in the budget, I only saw what it was, $100 or $110,000 for the golf course. So how much money do we get off the revenue sharing?
We have not received any revenue share.
I thought you said it was in the contract.
It's in the contract, but we have not received any revenue share.
The whole, this year, or?
We have, we have never received any revenue share off that contract, no, sir.
What was the bar?
$900,000 in gross revenue, and then 10% over the $900,000.
After that, apparently that's wide. Do we audit those figures?
They send us those numbers, and it's their numbers. They're not our numbers.
Well, do we, do we?
They go to purchasing, yes. The report goes to purchasing along with the payment.
So we verify the, their revenue?
So I'm even more disturbed by the fact that the city of Suffolk was paying us $240,000 a year?
$242 is what it ended, yes.
And their contract started at $60,000?
No, their contract started at $130,000.
No, 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 not the city of Suffolk.
No. LEL, yes, it was $60,000 is where it started.
So we went from $240,000, and then we gave somebody else a contract for $60,000?
Yes, sir.
What year was that?
That was in 2007.
What improvements?
We didn't get here sooner than that.
What improvements were associated with that?
$60,000. For that, for that five-year term, no improvements. They just had to make, do the general maintenance.
RFPs.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. The numbers just barging, we took a $180,000 cut in revenue in Suffolk in improvements, and they didn't have to do any? I know it's not you guys' fault you weren't here, but I'm just, it's disturbing. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
All right. And then, in 2015, we implemented the new business model for the Pro and the Pavilion contracts at Bydaway. In 2017, the management contract with LEL for Suffolk will expire in 2017. Yes, sir.
A little quick, I'll just audit it. We can take a look at that.
Okay. Your debt service facts. The golf course system revenue bonds were issued September 1998 in the amount of $9.8 million. $1.1 million was used to reimburse the city for working at City Park. City Park renovations were greater than the golf course. It included the entire City Park plan. $7.1 million for improvements at Bydaway, and $1.5 million for revenue fund deposit and capitalized interest payments.
Say, what's that? What does that mean?
Well.
The $1.5?
Reserve fund.
Yeah, reserve fund deposit and capitalized interest. And I asked Judy about that, and we weren't really sure. When Judy looked at the bond.
We were trying to do some research.
Figuring out where that's from.
Okay, so I don't feel, so $2.6 million of the debt, of the golf fund debt is not golf, is not golf-related?
Some of the $1.1 went to the links at City Park, but others, some portion of the $1.1 went to the City Park improvements generally.
Yeah, we're on the way to $1.5,000.
Right.
So we just charged the golf. That's like getting a mortgage, getting a second mortgage and using the money for whatever? That's basically what we did?
This was in 1998, but we can investigate that.
Okay, I know it's not fair to use, you know, you weren't there. I'm going to try to refrain, but.
Okay. As of June 30, 2014, the principal balance on the debt is $5.8 million. The estimated balance as of this June will be $5.3 million plus the cost of refinancing because several of those portions of bonds were refinanced. The final payment is 2026. The maximum annual payment that we will pay at any given time is $804,000 because the payments fluctuate every year. It's a different payment every year. The minimum annual payment that we'll make is then the final year of $169,000.
How much of that fund did we refinance this year? We just went up and refinanced some 2005 and '06 bonds and some money from golf, but how much of that was that, do you recall? We wound up saving a total of about $4.1 million on that whole refinancing package.
I believe the golf savings was about $380,000, something like that. I can get you that exact number.
And as we approach the financial performance, I want to mention the general performance of golf. I shared this with me earlier in the year, and he said at that time, we will come back and give you all more information. If you looked at 2013, 2014, our rounds of play are definitely above the national, state, and North Carolina average. These do contain comp rounds, and I want to mention down here that the comp rounds are free rounds given to volunteers that actually work at the golf course. If you look at this year, it doesn't contain comp rounds. We're slightly lower, so we pulled that data out. I do want to let you know that the end of year, we do anticipate 27,000 rounds of play for Bydaway, 13,000 rounds of play approximately for City Park. When I went back through the HAM study, which was done in 2011.
This is just Bydaway? That's not Bydaway and City Park?
No, that's just Bydaway. That's just Bydaway. City Park, because it's a nine-hole golf course, it's very difficult to find comparable. But in the HAM study, Bydaway in 2011 reported 27,600 rounds of play and 3,000 comp rounds. So when you look at this data, even with the change in the business model, it doesn't look like that business model change has affected our rounds of play. We're comparable to what we were experiencing from that study in 2011. In addition, we have.
So you're getting there about as many paid rounds as you were getting with the comp rounds before?
Well, the comp rounds, it takes us up to about 30, 31,000.
So you haven't lost any?
No, no. From changing over to the new business model, we really have not lost any business. As a matter of fact, we now have 147 tournaments and outings, which is more than what we had last. Now, this might be a little difficult initially to understand, but I do want to explain it to you. And I'm going to cover both Bydaway and City Park, but I want you to look at just City Park first. And basically, excuse me, you have the Men and Max, and we did a comparable study regionally where we looked at Sleepy Hole, Chesapeake Golf Club, Stumpy Lake, Riverfront, Kahoon Plantation, and Virginia Beach National. And you have all of the details in a sheet that's attached to this where it's a comp. There are a lot of different ways you can price golfing. You have weekend in-season, weekday in-season, weekend out-of-season, and you've got the nine-hole with the cart, junior, twilight, senior, lots of different combinations. But for the sake of this presentation, I'm only going to cover the weekend in-season and the weekday in-season, which is our peak time of year. This open box represents what we would actually get for City Park if someone would play, what we charge 18 holes at the high time of the day, the peak time of the day, which is usually early in the morning. This is the minimum amount, which is $30,000, and City Park is at the minimum, and the maximum that someone would pay if you played 18 holes would be $75,000. What's critical here is that we look strictly at nine holes. With City Park, you just go around twice for 18 holes, but that's a different experience. These golf courses that we have here for the nine holes are the ones that we're really comparing to with City Park. So City Park, our, our rate for weekend in-season is $16,000, and we're at the minimum, and the maximum is $35,000. When you look at a weekday rate, our charge is $16,000. Again, we are at the minimum, and the maximum is $30,000. What's interesting is that when we took all of our data from 2014, what we're actually getting per round of play is only about $15,000, and that includes the cart. So that means that people are walking. We're not getting what we think we should be getting for our rounds of play. It's very significant when you look at Bydaway. If you take a look at Bydaway, and our peak time is $45,000, and we have all of the other discounted rates, when we looked at all of our data for Bydaway, we were actually only getting about $31,000 per round of play, and $12,000 of that went to the cart. So that's $19,000 per round of play, which, when you look at these other facilities, that's significantly lower, so we were really underpricing ourselves. So we've come in with another pricing strategy, which went into effect April of this year. So if you take into account our 2014 average, and I'm using this as an example, but this is how we went through and calculated where our pricing was going to be. If you look at our average of $31,000 for the average round of play, the cart at 12, we actually rented 18,600 carts. And at $19,000, we had about 31,000 rounds of play, and that netted us 812,000, $270 in revenue. Now, if we took the strategy that, number one, you're there to play golf, that the cart is actually a convenience, we want you to pay for the golf. You don't have to have a cart, but if you're going to go to a golf course, you're going to pay for the golf. And so we said, we want to just charge you $5,000 for the cart. We can, we can handle that with the cart. We would have dropped our revenue by, to $93,000, but if we charged you $26,000 for the round of play, you would, we would have received $806,000 in revenue. And that would have been an $87,000 increase in revenue that the city would have realized had we had that pricing structure in 2014. So what we're doing, we're targeting 31,000 rounds of play, again, $155,000 in revenue from the carts, $806,000, which gives us an additional $148,000 in revenue. That's the concept that we're actually applying. So now, here's a pricing change as, because we realized we need to do something different with the pricing. When you look at where we were last year, our in-season rate on a weekday, and I'll just take the top one with the cart, you paid $23,000 plus $12,000. That's $35,000. Now, we're going to keep that top amount the same. It's when you break it into those other tiers. If you came at noon last year, you would pay only $27,000. This year, you're going to pay, and you pay $15,000 for the round of play. You didn't have to get a cart. Now, you're going to pay $24,000 for the round of pay, play, and then $5,000 for the cart. So you can see the differences there. We want you to pay for the golf. We're not trying to make a ton of money on the carts because the cart is actually a convenience. And hopefully, by reducing the price of the cart, people will rent more of the carts, and it will increase our revenue.
What are our costs for the carts? Repair, operating, we got a contractor coming in?
We have a contract that takes care of it.
Pick them up, fix them, bring them back, ready to go? How much does that cost?
And our break even for the cart is half of that.
$250?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we looked at what our break even was with half the rounds of play, and then went up from below. So we know.
Smart.
Yeah.
Very good.
But carts also speed up play?
They do. They really do. And when they're at $12,000, and it's a convenience, people who may say, well, I don't really want to pay that, I'll just walk in. So here's what's going to actually happen, what we anticipate to happen for next year. So last year, our golf was $19,000 a round, $12,000 with a cart, that's $31,000. In 2016, it's $30,000 per round average with $5,000 for a cart. So you really, if you've been a person that's been renting a cart all along, you aren't going to see but really a $4 increase on average. But that average should make a significant difference for us in our revenue. Okay.
Just a minute.
Okay.
While she's re-cueing that backup, how long has that cost for the carts been at this $2.50 per? Is that pretty consistent over the last five years, or?
Well, the charge from the contractors?
Twelve.
It's, he goes up a little bit. We have, I think it's a, maybe a three-year contract, or three or four-year contract that we have with them. And it's a fixed price for that amount of time, and then we bring in new carts and have them.
What does that contract consist of?
It's just carts, it's maintenance, they will bring in new batteries. Now, if we, if we have one stolen, it's covered under our insurance policy, and we will do some minor repairs on them, but the contract is, is a pretty good contract. Most of the companies have it. Okay, great. Now, I want to go over the Bydaway actual numbers with you. If you look at 2014, our total revenue pretty much barely covered our salaries and benefits. All right? And we ended up with $988,000 in revenue, and total expenses, including the debt, was $1.9 million. I do want to mention here that in 2014, we did not pay a principal payment. We only paid interest for the golf fund debt. And then, the transfer to the Debt Service Fund is a new item that you'll see in the budget, and from discussions with Judy, that transfer to the Debt Service Fund was always put in benefits, but it's now being moved out. And I think Judy does, that pays for the retirees.
That's the pension.
The pension.
Money for paying the debt service on the pension.
So that's added into, to the golf fund, but now it's visible. If we look at 2015, you can see the year-to-date performance, but now you look at our end-of-year projected performance, and this year, we're projecting the revenue at $1.1 million. And that's primarily due to the Pro Shop being added in, and we've also worked really hard to increase our golf fees. So we implemented the change in the, in the rating structure this April.
In the Pavilion.
And in the Pavilion. The Pavilion, we're only looking at about $7,400 total, but we, we didn't have it March, April, May, so we're working on that.
So we're now getting the, the golf fees, the, the Pro Shop?
Yes.
Terminals, all those things we weren't getting before?
Right. So now we have the golf fees, which we're estimating at $609,000, and we restructured. So that's going to be up from last year. The Suffolk has gone up $110,000 for that rental. The Pavilion is adding a small amount this year, and then the Pro Shop is at $128,000 at this point in time.
We weren't getting any of that before.
We weren't getting any of it. And right now, we've actually lost sales in the Pro Shop this year because we didn't, we were living with the previous budget. We didn't have revenue, we didn't have expense money budgeted to buy items for the Pro Shop. So we've sort of limped along with that.
The Suffolk rental's always been part of the P and L for Bydaway?
Yes, it has. Yes.
I noticed that on this, the rental, it's only 50, they make, they make two payments a year, I guess?
They make two payments a year. Their final payment is due this month. So, and I think it's due June 1st, but we're, we, I've talked with Wanda about that, and we're calling them to find out where that payment is.
This is the LEL?
LEL Management, yes.
I thought you said earlier that they hadn't paid us anything.
No, no. I was asked about profit sharing, but it's 10% profit sharing.
900, we haven't got any of that.
We haven't gotten any of that.
But we've got this baseline number.
Right.
But you know, from my mind, I'm thinking, you know, we were getting $240,000 in that. Now we're getting $110,000. It's, that's, I mean, that pays, that pays, that's the debt service. I mean, minimum payment is $169,000. And there's, and there is a, and there is a $130,000 difference right there.
But the, but the $240 was from Suffolk?
Yes, from the city.
Right. Not, not a private.
Well, we, 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 we're not trying to give it to anybody. I mean, if we charge municipality that kind of money, I would think we would definitely charge a for-profit organization at least as much. That's, that's my.
But the opportunity to renegotiate that is 2017, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
You put it out for bid in 2017. Okay.
Was the lease, was RFP put out on, on the lease? How did we choose LEL?
I'm, I'm not sure. It was in '07, how they did that. I'm assuming it was an RFP. I don't know.
Probably on the golf course, with a couple buddies.
It probably wasn't, because if you saw the previous Pro's contract, you know, it was a memo, so anyway, okay.
When you go down into, when we look at expenses, our operating expenses will end up at $192,000 this year. That includes what you will vote on tonight. That's $130,000 additional for expenses that we incurred this year.
What, what, what does that cover?
Okay, I have that on the next slide.
Okay.
Okay, all right. For 2016, you can take a look at what our budget is showing, a revenue at $1.5 million, and that's hinged upon the $200,000 we are targeting for the Pavilion and the Pro Shop at $225,000. I feel very strongly about the $225,000. The $200,000 will require us to have a 50% rental rate for the Pavilion. We charge $125,000 an hour for very impromptu, short-range meetings and events that exceed four hours. It's $100,000 an hour if you plan six months out of father, and for a two- to three-hour meeting, it's only $85,000 an hour.
So, Ms., your, your 2016 budget versus your 2016 target and projections that you showed on the pricing strategy, are you not including those figures? Are you just trying to be conservative, or are you not using same figures?
Well, here's what, what we found out. We probably are going to end up with an average where, rather than $26,000, it's probably going to be closer to $28,000. So we did give ourselves about $1,000, $1,000 rounds of play lower on the 780 rather than the 806. So we were a little bit conservative, just in case we don't meet the 31,000 rounds of play.
Okay.
Dropped it back just a little bit.
But right now, you're on projection to do that.
That's the target, 31,000, but we didn't budget for the 31,000.
I got you.
Right.
So, so even, even if you were optimistic, you would still, we would still be at a loss in 2016?
We would still be at a loss in, yes, in 2016, but the loss with or without the debt. So if you look at Bydaway, the loss with the debt is going to be 608,000. In 2016, we're projecting the loss to be, without the debt, about 22,000.
That's a substantial improvement over this fiscal year.
Yes, and even this year, with the $130,000 added in, we're projecting the loss will be less this year at 505,000.
It's great improvement.
See, this is, and this is why, and I think the majority of council wanted to go with this new model, to allow it at least a year to see if this thing would, would, would form into what you're projecting here, because I just think it was just irresponsible and very unfortunate that we have mismanaged and done some things with these golf courses and these types of deals that has hurt this city. I mean, what you just laid out here with the deal and how it was constructed is, is just really unfair, and to rush into turning this over to a private entity until we find out really and truly what we can yield with this, and the big bogey here is the debt.
The debt, yeah.
That we've got to be able to do, and nobody's going to take that on. So your issue is, are you, would you be in favor of pushing this out to the privatization and still eating the debt? Or if you can get this thing down, your projection of only losing 22,000 next year without the debt, and we continue growing that, and we keep the 31,000 rounds of golf? I mean, if you can hit those numbers, I think it's going to be a hard case to move out with it, and at least to 2017 until we tackle this, this issue out at the Suffolk Golf Course with, with that deal.
I think you don't, I think you got it, Mayor, because if we make these projections and then you fix this, this Suffolk contract, I mean, that, that can pay for, that can pay for Bydaway, and we, and we have no debt. I mean, we, we, we've lost a ton of money in Suffolk.
So the private entity in Suffolk, do they share any of their rounds? So the private entity in Suffolk, do they share any of their rounds of golf and all that? Or all of that's private and we don't have access to that? Do we have a clause in there to audit?
I think one of the things that we have not done a very good job with, and that is monitoring them. Monitoring the Suffolk Golf Course was left to the responsibility of the previous pro. So we've absorbed that now, that it's come back to the city. That was his responsibility to supervise that course. And we are going to start going through all of their financials.
So since we've changed the management model, have we been out there? Have you sent anybody out there just to walk around?
Yes, I've actually been out there to walk around. Wanda, Dr. Gill has actually talked with them. And when they made their last payment in January, I do believe that they gave purchasing a financial report. I haven't seen it yet, and so I do need to get with Mike to find out where that financial report is. Because I talked with Wanda about that today, you know, what, what are we doing with that financial report? So we do have to start looking at that in a lot of detail.
So, this stops at 216, the, how realistic is it that the debt that's going to be carried? How realistic is it that you're going to actually get to a negative 22,000 because that, that debt is there till 2026?
Right. This is without the debt. So when we take the debt off the table, Bydaway, without that debt, will probably lose about 22,000.
But I'm saying it's not off the table.
It's not.
So that's.
The real number is 608.
The real number is 608.
So that's unrealistic picture there. So why are we talking minus 22,000 when we, when we have debt?
Well, the reason why I've separated the debt out is because every year, the amount on the debt changes. So you never know if Bydaway is doing worse or is it doing better in its performance.
The debt fluctuates.
The debt fluctuates.
Right.
So last year, it was only 287,000 taken out. And so if you just look at this number, you, you can jump up 300 or 400,000 a year and, and you can't figure out, well, are we getting better is what we, is, is what we're planning? Is that working?
But it's going to always be at a loss regardless of how it fluctuates.
Yes, it will. It will be difficult.
Till 2026. So, you know, the question becomes, even with your most optimistic model here, we're still losing. And so, and, and then as far as the, using the Suffolk property, how, how do we guarantee that we're going to move from 60,000 to 240,000 in payment?
Well, first we put it out for bid and to get, to get some comparative bids. And there's, there's a lot of options and stuff. We can keep it and make money on it. It's, it's as simple as, you know, you rent your house out, you, you let somebody pay the mortgage. We, we, we're renting the house out and we're still paying the mortgage. That's, that's my simplified version of it. But, but, but the, the other option that, you know, you, you could sell it or you can just make the money on it and have that money make the debt payment for us. And, and if we get anywhere close to that, to that 240, and the, because the minimum debt payment one year was 169?
That's the very last year.
So, so it goes down. If we get anywhere near that, because I look at, the golf is kind of, kind of part of the big recreation thing that the city, city provides. So if we can get, if we can get golf for $22,000 a year. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. So, so I think we, we've got to investigate though, Dr. Whitaker, like you said, that, that Suffolk piece is, is where we can do that without taxing the citizens.
Well, to Dr. Whitaker's point is absolutely right. We, we, we got Bydaway over here. We, we're, we're beating the drum, saying, wow, we used to get $240,000 revenue from Suffolk on a lease payment. Well, I tell you what, Suffolk right now is performing better than Bydaway minus the debt. The debt's there. It's going to be there. That, that's an obligation that's got to be paid off. We, we're $22,000 in the hole. And everything, your model is predicated on 31,000 rounds of golf.
We have some additional information to share with you too on how to continue to see reductions in our expenses.
Well, that, that's, that's good, but, but the driver is the 31,000 rounds of golf. I don't see that 20, minus 22,000 becoming a 240,000.
If, if you're correct, and, and Bydaway, I mean, and Suffolk is performing that well, then shouldn't be no problem in getting, getting a better deal in, in 2017.
But we should look at the same deal.
Bill, I'm, I'm talking right now.
Okay.
Okay. To, to use towards Bydaway and this, and our, and our city operation, because there is no debt on, out, out in Suffolk. So everything we get from Suffolk is, is quote-unquote profit that, that we put into, put into our fund to make this thing work.
We, we should look for the same type of deal at Bydaway.
I don't disagree with me.
Hold on, Bydaway. So the, the present debt is 5.3 million.
That's correct.
Okay. And so, um, even if we get the, the 242,000 dollars a year.
Right.
From the Suffolk operations, you're, you're still looking at about another 22 years, just using that to pay down the debt. That's without any interest. So, so I'm not clear how, how that becomes an optimistic model for us.
Well, can I finish with the presentation?
Yeah.
And show you some of the other things that go along with this?
It didn't hurt as bad. There was a song, "It Hurt So Good." It's, it, it might be hurting so good. Go ahead.
So on your agenda tonight, you have a request to appropriate at 130,000. And earlier in the year, we had unexpected expenses. We had to purchase the pros' inventory. We also had to purchase the grill furniture, because that was owned by the concessionaire that no longer has the contract. Once we obtained a new contract and got rights to the pavilion, all of the furniture belonged to, to that vendor. And then.
How did that happen? Never mind. Go ahead.
And then we had the unexpected clubhouse and driving range repairs. So those expenses were paid, and now we just need about 130 to finish us out for this year for water and sewer, part-time labor, pro shop inventory. And here's part of the problem. We have pro shop sales and we've sold quite a few gift certificates. And if those people come in and redeem them, we, we don't have the inventory to sell them. We actually had about 40,000 in gift certificates this year. So, and we have still about 20,000 outstanding. So we do need to make sure that people.
Covered it.
Yeah, we have enough to cover for those gift certificates. Credit card fees, because of the pro shop, now the credit card fees are on the city, which we were not, we did not budget for, so we have to pay those fees. Some custodial supplies and then chemicals for lawn care. For City Park, this one is very interesting. City Park, unlike Bydaway, does not have as great of an opportunity for revenue. The total revenue for City Park in 2014 was 195,000. That revenue did not come close to covering just salaries and benefits. And their loss was 254,000. When you look at 2015, their revenue will be 209,000. Will just cover salaries and benefits. And then we're looking now at a loss of 229. And then in the 2016 budget, we're pretty much basically in the same position where the revenue does not cover our salaries and benefits.
Is, is that because it's more, it's, it's a smaller golf course and it's more, it's more, it's more park than golf course?
It's more park than golf course. It is a smaller golf course. There's a different, um, quality of play there. It's still a good play, but the type of play is going to attract mostly kids. It's a, it's a place where you learn to play. It has a lot of seniors. It's a walkable course. It's a family course. You're not going to get the type of golfer that, um, you know, is willing to pay $45 a round. It, it really is a different level of play, but it's still a good quality for the person that's going to play there. So when we look at it and when we consolidate both Bydaway and City Park, you can see the net loss without the debt is 854, 850,000 for 2016. And then with the debt is 850, without the debt is 247. But the key here is that with the golf fund, a large amount of the debt does come, well, the, the loss comes from City Park and the debt. So City Park is, right now, it's not going to be a profitable entity. It's going to be very difficult to just have it break even with or without any debt on it. It's, it's just not going to happen. So here are the options for continued financial improvement from the HAM study. We found the HAM study just recently, and it was interesting that the things that we were doing were also recommended in the HAM study. Plus, there were some additional items recommended in the HAM study. That study was conducted in 2011, and there were 10 recommendations to increase revenue from that study. We implemented one of those recommendations as a city prior to 2015. And that was giving the pro the flexibility in pricing. We implemented five up through 2015, where we now have a viable website. We have an internet presence. We have targeted emails. We have flyers. And they also recommended modifying our pavilion, pavilion contract. There's one item on the recommended, recommendation list that we're, we're planning for next year. And that's, we really want a comprehensive marketing plan. That's the only way we're going to get the revenue up for the pavilion. And then there are three under evaluation, which are online reservations, discount packages, and online sales of rounds. The problem with online sales of rounds is that you have to give a large portion over to like Amazon or other places. There are three recommendations to reduce expenses. Two are under consideration for 2016 that I'm going to share with you tonight. And one is under evaluation, and that is the utilization of free labor for ground maintenance. Okay, to increase the revenue, we have, increase the revenue, these are other options that were not in the HAM study that we are suggesting looking at. And one is maybe partnering with the city of Suffolk in terms of the Suffolk Golf Course. We know Suffolk is in need of a city park. Maybe that's a better way or better utilization of that property. Change the contract terms and conditions with the current, um, management firm. There's also the opportunity to sell the naming rights for additional revenue. It doesn't have to be called the Suffolk Golf Course. Maybe planners might want it to be the planners' golf course, and maybe we sell the naming rights to that. There's some other ideas that came up from Gene White in terms of, of sale of timber on the, on the property. City has sold timber twice now and received revenue off of the timber. In addition to that, Gene White also mentioned that there are 22 acres that we have outside of the current bypass over in Suffolk. We own 22 acres of land and suggested that maybe that's something we want to consider looking at. Does the city really need those 22 acres? It was a part of the watershed, but once V-Dot brought in the bypass, it separated it from the watershed. So we have that property sitting out there.
Looking at it to, to, to sell, you know? So what, what's on it? And just, just.
Nothing. It's just 22 acres.
Gene's getting paid to watch it, but, yeah, Dr. Whitaker.
So, so what you're presenting to us is, comes from, a part of this comes from the E.L. HAM study that was done?
The first page comes from the E.L. HAM study. They're recommending. This page comes from our own investigation and study and recommendations from staff.
You what, blend, blend, some from what HAM?
Some from what HAM, yes. We're doing some of the things that HAM said. But now when we start looking at Suffolk, what is really the best and highest use for Suffolk? What's the best value for it?
So, can I ask this? This was a 2011 study.
Yes.
Okay. So, given that the city knew that it was losing revenue on this for, for several years now, why weren't any of these recommendations implemented earlier?
I don't know that. It may have been the responsibility of the golf pro at that time to recommend them, but they, all of this is rolled back under the city now.
Well, my, my question is, goes to, were the recommendations not realizable?
They were realizable. They, they were realizable.
So, so therefore the, the council or whoever just allowed this loss to occur without aggressively trying to pursue the recommendations of a study that council paid for?
Pretty much.
I don't remember, ever, ever hearing this, uh, this study.
No, we, we commissioned HAM to do this, and he brought folks in and they went all around. They even did some comparables with other golf.
Did you know we owned 22 acres in Suffolk?
And, yeah.
You knew it?
And, and so, yeah, I think the whole issue boils down to the contract, who was running it, and who was minding the store, and what we as a management here and a council allowed to occur right underneath our nose.
Well, my concern, looking, looking at the figures, that we're putting, we're putting public money into a venture that your, your own projection is showing that our combined golf operations will be losing 200, well, really, 850,000. You can't ignore the debt. I, I don't see how that's justified.
Well, with the increased revenue, there are opportunities to possibly cover the debt in its entirety and not have it burden Bydaway and/or City Park and still provide recreational opportunities for the city of Portsmouth. And that is, do we partner with Suffolk because we know they need a city park? That, that's something that's been in the news. And they invested a lot in that course, and maybe they want to park with nine holes and they have something else that goes on there. Do we want to change the contract terms and conditions with the existing contractor? If he can't give us the 242 and still make a profit, because he's not in business for charity. The reason probably why his rent is reduced is because that's probably his margin, that extra 100. Or do we look at selling naming rights? I think if the city's really interested in keeping Bydaway under its control and, and providing a value for its citizens, then there are ways to deal with the debt with additional revenue options, just like we're doing with the pavilion, just like we're doing with the pro shop. So that's why we're throwing these out there. There's the land. If you wanted to sell the land that's on the other side of the, the bypass, would that pay off the debt? Are there, there are different options that are out there if that's what you want us to look at.
Let me see. I think that it's unfair to keep comparing and bringing this debt up when we've got the pavilion that, for whatever reason and why, council and management back then spent that kind of money to create that venue and then didn't use it. So it was almost like you built something just for the good old boys, and we never went out in the community or anywhere else to do what we're doing now with the pavilion. We done this, we rolled all this debt up, and now it's debt, but it's not fair to compare it to the operations of the golf course. And I think that's why you break it out.
Right.
I mean, because it's important to break it out, because you have the debt, and the debt consists of a lot of other things that wouldn't be fair to apply to Bydaway or, or either one of the other ones. So.
So you're right, Mayor. To your point, somewhere between, between 1.1 and 2.6 million, not even golf debt that golf is paying for.
Right.
So we just found that out. We know 1.5 of it, and it's, it's not even golf debt for sure, and part of that 1.1. So you're right. And the other thing is, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see, that's just me. I don't see turning this over to someone else and still paying the debt.
Yeah. Well, that's, that was my point. So the pavilion, have we done anything in the past at all? Brandon, I guess you've been here longer than anybody else. Never thought you'd hear that, did you? You've been here longer than anybody else. Have we tried at all to aggressively do anything with marketing that pavilion and utilizing it in this way? Or has it just been a, a site for whoever came to play golf could also go over there and have a rally? I mean, what have we done with this?
We've done some, some limited marketing in the past, but I, I think it's, it's certainly what we've done in the last year has proven improvement. We've got to do a lot more than that.
Renovated to this level. It's been what?
About a year or so since it's been, maybe, maybe two years.
It's been longer than that.
Well, but it's been, you mean renovated since we just upgraded the carpet or renovated? It was 1998.
1998.
1998.
What has happened since 98 to that pavilion? What have we done to do anything other than?
Just, yeah, just, you could call them capital repairs, but we haven't added on to it or, you know, enhanced the utilization.
We haven't advertised it much because the city didn't have control over it. The, the vendor who had the grill had the pavilion, and so all revenue from the pavilion went to that vendor. It did not come to the city. So the city only used the pavilion for golf outings. So it was left up to that vendor to advertise. Now, right now, this year, year-to-date, well, the end of June, we would have had 25 events. Right now, we have 55 events between July and next year already booked. And that's without an aggressive marketing campaign, because we really just don't have the money to do the marketing yet.
So we co-link the. So we co-link the grill with the pavilion?
Yes.
And put all that with the young?
That vendor, yes. And so the rental revenue for the pavilion and the catering, everything went to that vendor.
This is almost criminal.
Well, now it's all revenue to the general, to the golf fund.
Right.
Do we have the assessed value of the Suffolk property or the end appraised value of the Suffolk property?
As a matter of fact, I do on my desk, but I don't have it with me, but I can get it to you before we go into the 7 o'clock session.
And also, do we have that same value for Bydaway?
For Bydaway, I do believe I have that as well. I do know I have the Suffolk one. Gene and I met about that this week, and I have the same.
Your model's built on the average round of, what, $26?
It's about $28 average, but we still have highs of 40, and the lowest will be, I think, 25.
To put that in perspective, to even reach what the Suffolk at one time was leased for, that would require almost an additional 9,000 rounds of golf. So you'd have, you'd have to bump it up, and that's not counting the debt service, which that's just the revenue produced by golf, period, minus expenses. You would need almost 9,000 additional rounds of golf.
With the golf fund, we are looking at every possible source of revenue coming back to the city. So to cover the debt and to cover the expenses, it's not just going to be rounds of play. When you look at the demographic in Portsmouth, there's not a lot of elasticity in pricing that we have for golf. It's not Virginia Beach. It's not going to get $75 a round. Our community cannot afford that. We have a lot of retirees that play at that golf course, and we now are seeing a tremendous amount of diversity at the golf course. And so we want to provide for everyone in the city an opportunity to play golf who wants to play golf. We've started the Portsmouth Junior Golf Association. We're recruiting a lot of kids that will play over at City Park. It's going through our summer camp program, and the goal is to open up golf for everyone. But our community does not have the elasticity in price, so even if you outsource it, they are not going to be able to charge the $75 or the $65. Our competition is going to be Stumpy Lake, Sleepy Hole, where you're going to get $35 to $45 a round of play. So when you look at that price and the margin, then you have to have other sources of revenue to offset your overall costs.
You can't just play your way through that. You've got to use some other innovative things.
You have to have other innovative things with or without the debt. And that's the pavilion, that's the Pro Shop, and that's the grill. And right now, with the grill, that vendor does have a profit sharing component with us. So once he reaches $200,000, then he has a profit sharing component in his contract, and we will be monitoring that.
And that's subject to audit, too. We need to make sure that we get.
Just, I'm just curious from your historical timeline, when the city purchased Sleepy Hole Park, was that all by Suffolk at the time, or was that private?
That was Suffolk at the time, yes.
That was the Suffolk Golf Course?
Yes.
And then sold it back to Suffolk?
Yes, they sold it back to Suffolk, yep. And there's a, there's a few more bullets in this issue. The second item was the sponsorship for the City Park links and the naming rights, and I handed this out to you. We had worked, Parks and Rec, Chuck Rigby and I had worked together on this along with purchasing, and we tried to go out to see if we could get sponsorships to improve the golf course at City Park. We were looking, that's the only way you're going to increase the revenue. We were looking at a double-decker driving range, a lighted course to extend the day in terms of play, because in September it gets dark early, but it's still warm. And we were looking at doing some, some activities with the amphitheater. We sent it out for proposal. We got no responses. Chuck said, "Nita, it has to have a high touch," if I could quote him. And so what we really need to do is try to find a company that will obtain a sponsorship for, so we can upgrade that golf course. We were looking at possibly naming rights for the links, if that was acceptable. And we were trying to get anywhere from 1.2 million to 1.9 million for that. If we do have the opportunity to upgrade that course, we believe that the revenue for that course would possibly double, if not triple, because there's nowhere locally that you can play at night on this side of the water. And then you have the two-tier driving range with the warm air blowers that allows you almost four seasons of play, where you now have to basically shut down the course in the dead of winter. So that's an idea that we had for increasing revenue.
But you still only have nine rounds?
You only have nine holes.
No matter what.
I only have nine holes. But you don't want to put a lighted course at Bydaway because you have the neighbors. The neighbors at City Park are probably not going to fuss too much because you've got the cemetery right.
I don't know. Fuss about poker smoking.
For the, for the naming rights issue, sponsorship, are you pursuing it through a private company that's trying to?
That's the plan now. So we have to work with purchasing on how to go about doing that. The other suggestion that came up was maybe we could work with the partnership to do that as opposed to a private company, because of course we would have to pay them. So we're still tossing this around on how, what's the best way to go out and do that.
You said work with the, which partnership?
The Portsmouth Partnership was one of the ideas that came.
Strike that.
Okay.
But the, the strategy here is if you were able to get a corporate sponsor for the naming piece, take that additional money, put it back into that, make it more.
Attractive.
Attractive.
Right. And have an opportunity to increase the revenue there without having to have the debt associated with that.
How much you think we need to spend out there to get it to that point?
I have it in here, and if you look at it, the cart path would be about $500,000, the cart barn about $50,000, golf course lighting about $400,000. We were thinking about the amphitheater upgrades. If we could put semi-permanent walls in, or you could put them in and have, and change a little bit of the seating. We have a lot of weddings out there. We could have many more events at City Park in general and the amphitheater. And then finally, the two-story driving range, which was, that's pie in the sky, that's about 650. We would just settle with cart, cart path, amphitheater upgrade, and a cart barn.
All-in.
And lighting. And lighting. That would be, that would be 1.9 if we did not.
So we spend $2 million, and what are you, what are you hoping we can get out of a naming rights?
I was hoping we could get about at least $1.3 million out of naming rights over a period of, let's say, five years or something like that. So it wouldn't be all at once. They could pay it over five years, and we could make those upgrades to the course and to that whole complex.
That's, that's going to be an interesting endeavor to see, I mean, we pursue naming rights on the school board, and we have a captive audience at football games, basketball games. Who's the captive audience at a golf course?
Well, we're going to try. The captive audience are youth. When we look at it, there may be some, and there's health initiatives. So Bonsacores or Centerra might be interested in it. You may have a sports company interested in it. You may have an athlete interested in it. So we left it wide open.
How do we get the name in telos?
That goes through IMG. They, I think they're responsible.
They got that?
Yes. And then the last idea for increasing revenue, again, is increasing the advertising. And when I say increasing it, I mean significantly. We do need to get some television spots in. We don't have the revenue for that, but, or the budget. We only have about $15,000.
A lot of people watching channel 48 and 39 now, so.
Yes.
And a digital board on 264.
Can you advertise?
I wonder why.
Is it our station?
Yeah.
Now, when it comes to, to the golf fund, everyone talks about revenue, but the ugly side of improving your, your bottom line is decreasing expenses. And so in order to implement the HAM study recommendations, these are the ideas that we came up with. So to increase efficiencies, we're looking at sharing the golf staff with Parks and Recreation to support the new recreation center. The new budget was passed, we have, and without any additional manpower added to Parks and Rec. We had put in the budget to close Port Norfolk and J.E. Parker. That was taken out. We were going to use that manpower, so we have no additional manpower. So we could probably take percentages of this manpower, because when you think about it, we have four, we have four pros out there. And I'm just talking about pro staff now. I'll talk about the other maintenance staff later. Yeah, four pros. In the dead of winter, there's not a lot to do. So there's the opportunity of sharing those resources with Parks and Recs to, so that we don't have to hire additional manpower, and it's a, it's a more efficient use of our manpower. Also, we're looking at outsourcing all maintenance labor and keeping city supervision. What we'd like to do, because we have several people heading to retirement, as we attract those positions through retirement, don't fill them with permanent positions, fill them with part-time temporary labor. And then the third one is an idea where we're thinking about consolidating our maintenance services to increase efficiency. So the first one is, is you consolidate City Park, the park itself and the links. And those maintenance guys do all of City Park. That's one consolidation idea. The second idea is to consolidate cemeteries, City Park, and the links maintenance group, where you just have a crew that does that entire facility. That's all they do. And then a percentage of that labor is charged back to the golf fund. So now, if you have all of those maintenance guys under Dennis, in the dead of winter, when it's not a lot of grass to cut, they can hang ornaments, they can do all these other things. So we really need to look at how we can efficiently use the manpower and charge back to the golf fund only the manpower that's really required to maintain it. That's where we'll get additional.
Why haven't we done that? I mean, that's our job as a.
Yeah, it sounds like.
I don't need a crew at this place and a crew over here, and these guys aren't doing something, and they won't go over here because they're not assigned over here. That's, that's a manager.
They're in different funds, so it's not.
I understand that, but.
And anything that, that's shifted from the golf fund to the general fund, then we've got to increase the general fund expenditure for that portion of that salary. So you're just shifting cost between funds.
Yeah, but this sharing of services lowers the overall cost.
It should make it more efficient.
Right. Make it more efficient, and then you spread it across those funds, and, and you better utilize the workforce.
Yes, sir.
But I thought during our budget discussions that there were already some issues with trying to maintain the cemeteries with, with what we have. So how now combining all that together becomes doable?
It's just a step in, toward more efficient use of manpower, you know?
I mean, but you, so you weren't trying to be efficient in manpower?
Well, we always are, but this, this would utilize some folks that are currently funded entirely out of the golf fund for those general fund operations like parks and cemeteries.
I'd say that's something we need to look at right away. I just, I'm curious about the whole naming rights piece. I mean, I think that's aggressive. I think we need to get the information on that acreage out in Suffolk and see if that isn't something that we could possibly look at selling and immediately try to get this $5.8 million debt we get.
That 22, that you were talking about, the 22 acres, we need to find out, like you said, what that stuff, what that's worth in COF.
Well, Brian just commented to me, and I think it's something we need to make sure we're, we're not disposing of something that's protected watershed property or has any sort of restriction on development because of Chesapeake Bay Act. And if that's the case, then we're not going to be able to.
I bet Gene can tell you.
Right. Yeah, he did. He said it was separated. Once they built the bypass, that 22 acres was cut off, and so, and he was talking about that. But well, we have to investigate it.
Just because on the other side of the road, it's still in our, our watershed extends far beyond the property we actually own. And so in a perfect world, if we could own all of our watershed, we can control it and protect our water source, which certainly is not within the realm of possibility to own all of it, because it's, it's way too large. So will this 22 acres make a difference? I'm not prepared to tell you will or wouldn't. I just want you to point out that it's still a part of our watershed, and the fact that there's a road that separates it, so it's not contiguous with the other property we own, doesn't detract from the fact that it's still in our watershed. It does provide some protection, because that land's not developed.
Come back and tell us what's possible.
Sure.
So, tell us what's possible, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Right. And that was just an idea that Gene had come up with.
Good idea.
And I'm, like I said, I just, it's just so hard when you put ourselves behind the eight ball this far behind it and then try to claw out in one or two years. It's just not, when you look at some of the things that we had past practices and just kind of.
But this was very educational. Thanks, thank you.
What's up next, sir? Yes, sir. Let me ask Bob Baldwin if he would come and give you a briefing on where we are with the PER properties. You may recall, this is the 16-acre industrial property that's at the foot of the Jordan Bridge. And as a result of amending the zoning code last fall to allow for concrete uses in the industrial zone, the property owner has applied for a use permit to be able to do that. And that's winded its way through the Planning Commission, and it's on your agenda tonight for public hearing. But since it's been a while since we discussed it, we thought we would just bring you up to speed on it and make you aware of where we are. Take it away, Bob.
Mr. Mayor Wright?
Sure.
Members of council, just going to be a brief summary. You do have a full staff report with your public hearing agenda tonight, and of course, during the regular session, John Hartley will go through that in, in detail. But since this has had sort of a long and winding road to get to this point, we thought it'd be helpful to kind of remind everybody how this got to where the form, form that it is. So back in the summer of 2013, this issue of, of developing a property for a concrete plant came up. And you may recall, at the time, there was an original, an original concern from the zoning ordinance about the requirement that the property must have access to a primary arterial road, and this site did not have that. And then some further investigation, the zoning ordinance also uncovered the fact that in the definition section of the zoning code, this use was actually not a, not a permitted use in the city's zoning ordinance. So with council's direction, code amendments were prepared. They came back to city council, and you basically got two things that happened in those code amendments, which were adopted last December. One is, it takes this use as concrete plant use and makes it a use that is permissible via use permit, so city council has control over that. The other thing it did, it went into the use-specific conditions where the requirement was for access to a primary arterial. There's also, you'll see in your staff materials, I'm sure you've already seen that, a requirement about screening. What was changed in that section of the ordinance was to give city council the authority to modify or waive some of those conditions, which are otherwise fixed in the code. That, again, was approved by city council back in December. Following that time, we've been working with the applicant to get the application materials in hand. A couple of things we were asking for were information on traffic impact analysis, roadway condition analysis. And there was also some issues that have been raised about concerns about the shipyard, impacted the operation on the shipyard. So the applicant and the Navy folks got together and went through a series of assessments. The Navy did a, a broad assessment of, of their concerns related to the, to the, to the uses being proposed. And again, in your applicant, in your materials, you'll see that the Navy ultimately sent a letter to the planning department listing some recommended or suggested conditions that would address their concerns with this use. We had a follow-up letter from the applicants agreeing to all of those conditions. Those were rolled into the, to the overall staff, staff report recommendations, the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission, you know, conducted their public hearing and has recommended approval with that list of conditions in there. So as it stands, you have the use permit, there's a provision there to modify, you'll see that in, to modify those use-specific conditions regarding the arterial road, regarding the screening. We have the issue related to the Navy, I think, addressed through the conditions proposed by the Navy, agreed to by the applicant, and then rolled into the staff report. It's pretty straightforward. I know this has been going on for a couple of years now. I thought it'd be helpful to kind of remind, to kind of remind everyone how we, we got the situation from there to here.
Well, back up a little further to the left from there and talk about the wood grain pellet operation, and where is that all?
Okay, so.
Now, with us switching gears to wanting to crush concrete.
Okay, we'll back up to 2010. That's the initial one we got in the, so regarding the grain operation, like that's the initial foray into this. Now, you did, you also have this property, it has, has some, some improvements done to the property, you know, as part of the super fund site work that's going on out there, Wharf building. There's been a lot of site improvements that had to occur leading up to this.
They've got the berm and all that up there now.
All of that, all of that. So then you got in the situation on the, on the grain operation, a site plan was submitted by the, by the property owners to do the grain operation. And then, and then during the course of that is when a lot of these other issues came up, when the, when the question about doing the concrete plant as a, as a permanent operation came up. So the site plan itself.
Are these the same people, or these are two separate?
Same people.
So this guy that wanted to come here and secure this piece of property for grain operations that he was going to be doing has now decided to switch his business model operations that he was going to be doing, has now decided to switch his business model from grain to crushing concrete?
The grain is still in. I think, the way I would describe this is...
So now he wants to do both?
Yes. And I think you'd describe more like a, they would describe it more like a port operation, in fact. But you've got grain operation, you're going to have some concrete operation, all occurring on the same piece of property. That's what's been proposed. The grain, the grain part of it, permitted by Wright. So that was, you know, requires a site plan approval. And as I was beginning to mention, the applicant that submitted a site plan, that was in the process of being reviewed. And then the issue came about concrete plant, which is also shown as an element of that site plan. So the site plan processing stopped. All the issue with the concrete plant came back through city council, determining whether or not that was something you wanted the zoning ordinance to amend to make as a potential use permit use. And that's where that is. So where we stand today, the site plan's still not approved for the whole operation. It's still, I would say, being held until the issue on the concrete plant is ultimately answered.
So if we don't allow this guy to crush concrete, he doesn't want to have the site, and he doesn't want to do business at all?
I can't answer that question. That's the question.
I mean, so, and I know I made this before, and I'm going to vote against this, because I just don't like the whole way this thing has migrated and switched gears, and we blamed ourselves, we blamed the verbiage and the language and all of that. I just don't understand how this fellow come and want to do this grain operation, and I think we all were in favor of. And now he's trying to switch gears and to do something else, and that narrow road that we got going back there and all the other challenges doesn't present itself to having that thing back there, whether someone here wants to push that or not. I'm just very disturbed with that, and I don't see how those two operations can coexist, and how as a grain company now want to be a concrete crushing, or does this guy see a business opportunity to do, like most people, come here to Portsmouth, tie up our property, and then try to sublet and make money off of this thing while he do grain, he get his buddy in here to crush concrete, and somewhere down the road, we wind up being the referee and getting in the middle of trying to straighten this mess out five, 10 years down the road? I said it before, I still smell a rat, and I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. But, go ahead, Dr. Wood.
Yeah. You said 2010, that's when the company began the wood grain operation?
Well, that was the initial...
Is that when the property was purchased?
Acquired.
It was purchased?
Right, 2010.
Okay. Now, who did the owner purchase it from?
The property was purchased from the city's PPIC.
Okay. So, when it was purchased, going through PPIC, I guess there were some incentives that were given. You mentioned the super fund?
Well, I'm not aware of any incentives. You'd have to, we'd have to get Mallory Kaler from Eckin Island, but I can mention, the property has been used as a staging area, as part of the super fund cleanup for that allied site.
Okay. So, the super fund, just clue me in, that's, is that state, federal funds?
Both.
Okay. And so, super funds were used to clean the property up so that this business model could be there?
So the property could be cleaned up, and, or used for some productive purpose.
Well, for the wood pellet.
It could be used for anything, in this case.
Right. But it wasn't, it wasn't anything, it was the wood pellet business model?
It was grain.
The grain, okay, that was presented. And so, at that time, a cement crushing operation would not have been eligible...
That's correct.
On that property.
That's correct.
So, we used, well, this owner took advantage of super funding, also going through PPIC, possible incentives, I don't know, and presented one business model. And so now, the owner gets the property at probably some type of discounted price. Could not have operated the current business model that's being proposed to us today, and has now shifted gears and would like for us to approve, and because of an ordinance change that I figured...
I'll back up, just to try to be clear.
I'm just concerned that it seems like there were funds used to make this property available and appealable to this owner based on one business model. And now the owner is changing the business model after having taken advantage of some funding from state and federal that he could not have done under the original model.
Well, I...
That's going to happen anyway.
Yeah, just the cleanup has gotten to hap, is happening anyway. It's a much broader cleanup out there. I just want to mention...
But he could not have, he could not have had a cement crushing business...
Initially.
Initially at that time.
And if I go back to the chronology, can I help you with this question? In fact, there's a deed restriction as well that was placed on the property back at that same time. And that was one of the other issues that council was aware of in the discussions, the PPIC, the deed restriction on the concrete process. But the PPIC, as I understand it, and I'm not going to speak for them, has been supportive, at least in advising council, their support of the concrete operation. But that deed restriction's still in place until the PPIC removes the deed restriction. And that would be done contingent upon city council agreeing to the use permit.
And also...
Well, one thing, the prospective business owner, he had nothing to do with the cleanup. That super fund site, that cleanup was underway way before he come along.
Yeah, so their property being used as a state, as an assist, it's a staging.
Don't taint him, and I couldn't even call his name right now, but he didn't have anything to do with the cleanup site.
Oh, it's not trying to taint him, I'm just saying, I mean, anyone would take advantage of that, but...
Well, taking advantage, how long's that property been vacant?
I believe it's over 60 years, something.
60 years. Yeah. So, you know, he came to a proposal that we seemed, council at the time seemed it was a pretty good proposal. He came back with a concrete crushing operation, and isn't there one close by? I thought there was one close by there as well. Is that accurate?
And I think one of the issues that came up in the zoning discussion is the fact that we've got, you know, that kind of use...
Right across, I think it's right across...
It's on the Jordan Bridge.
Yeah, yeah, the other side of the bridge. So, it's not that this thing is alien, that site is commercial. My concern was to make sure that no dust from that operation, if there indeed was dust, would not affect the community, cratic. What was that outcome?
Well, you'll see in your application materials, that the mixing facility is all being done and enclosed.
Okay, so all that's enclosed?
With dust is under control.
So there's no...
And again, that was the Navy's, one of the Navy's primary concerns with the dust. And that's, there's a controlling aspect to the site.
So the Navy's all right with it?
Yes, yes.
So there's no objection from the Navy? Have there been...
With conditions.
With the conditions.
Well, the conditions, it's enclosed operation.
That's correct.
And I think that should be contingent anyway.
Well, and I would mention that the city council has the authority to, you know, apply conditions, whether anybody wants them or not. In this case, you happen to have a situation where the Navy made a request, and the developers actually indicated they're perfectly acceptable to them, would not impact their ability to operate the business.
And what's the potential tax revenue?
That I don't, I don't know.
But why, why wouldn't we know that?
Well, is it grain, or is it concrete? Or you want to know both?
Well, both. That's the way he's proposing.
Vice Mayor. I'll get it back to you now.
Vice Mayor.
I'm just going to back us up to remind us what Mr. Moody just said. This super fund site goes all the way to the other side of the Jordan Bridge, to the old Creosote place. So all that work was underway by EPA federally, long before anybody started looking at that property. PER is a company, and I can't recall what it stands for, is one of the largest grain operations in the United States. It's not some Johnny come lately that just said, oh, here's a piece of property I ought to buy. He has grain operations all over the country. Concrete crushing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, it was part of the construction process of his war.
That's correct.
As he, as he stands by waiting for EPA to finish phase one, phase two, phase three, and they're nowhere near finished yet, concrete crushing is part of what he is allowed to do to build his grain operation. Then PPIC came back to us and said, we'd like to lift that deed restriction on concrete crushing, because he now has an opportunity to sell concrete. Since he's been doing this, others have come and said, we want to buy concrete. And we said, no. Wait, it might be a problem for the Navy, it might be a problem for the neighborhood. Now, everybody went back, the Navy said, you got to do A, B, C, D, everybody's agreed. Same thing with neighborhood. As long as they're all happy, I don't know why we aren't happy, this is a big business for our port.
And it's been vacant for 60 years?
Yeah.
Dr. Wood. The deviation from the access and screening requirements, why is that there as far as the screening of heavy industrial material?
The issue that comes up, the way, the language of the screen, I have to speak on the screening first. The screening requirement is that the screening must be up to a height, that whatever you're screening can't be taller than the screen itself. And what we're going to be looking at, obviously, in an operation, is we bringing in aggregate and for, you know, from raw materials for making concrete, it's going to be much taller than, say, a six or an eight-foot privacy fence could screen. So it's physically, I'll call it impossible to fully screen something of that size, in particular when the screening would, when it would be visible, say, here on the Jordan Bridge, looking down into it. So, the determinations that allow city council the right to, or the option to waive the requirement to screen it, in this case, because screening's impractical, because the materials, in this case, are going to be taller than a typical, you know, eight-foot fence.
So are you talking, you're talking about a screen and material that goes up during construction?
Like a fence, like a privacy fence, or something like that. Something would, and if you're screening equipment, that's one thing. But if you're going to have a stockpile of materials for making concrete, six or eight feet's not tall enough.
In an industrial area, a few blocks from another concrete plant.
The second part of the deviation, the one on the access road, those are questions, you know, they're kind of, they're kind of the end of the, end of the city out there with Elm, you have Veneer Road, which is in access in there. And one of the requirements that we made them do as part of the analysis, we do a traffic impact analysis, and they also did a roadway condition analysis, it requested the city engineer. And so they had that report conducted, look at the physical condition of the roadways they would be using to access their site. Of course, they don't have a lot of neighbors around them also using the roads, it's fairly restricted number of vehicles.
How's he going to get around Dixon property, which is a major issue? There's a little small trail going around there to get out there to that access, which his grain operation, I actually walked out there and met him, we walked that site, he told me what he wanted to do, I was in favor of it, went to the PPIC meeting, until he flipped and did a 180. How are we going to get around all that?
Well, I'm going to let, the city engineer may want to speak to some of the requirements on how to get around there.
How you going to get concrete crushing, heavy-duty trucks, bringing that stuff, and that little pathway to get around Dixon property to go back? I mean, it just changes the whole view of what we anticipated, and... How you doing, sir?
Good. How are you doing this evening? It's a standard city street. It may not look like much, but actually, widthwise and payment-wise, it's a standard city street. And he's got that type of equipment going in there now to help him build that operation, so it'd be no different. So, and everything that I have there...
So is the grain operation going on now?
No.
No?
Not yet. He's still building the site.
So we're in, what, year, what, three?
That...
It's been two or three years we've been talking this grain site?
Year, when? Bob says 2010.
The first discussion 2010, but as I mentioned...
Boarded in 10.
Site plan's not approved yet, so they can't build and construct and operate the grain operation until the site plans. And that's been held up as they moved in with this question about concrete.
Because we're trying to ease in concrete now. And, Doc.
Is there going to be a safety issue at all?
And in what regard?
With the concrete coming in for him making concrete?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Is it going to bring in income for the city?
It should, yes.
Okay.
But we don't know. Within five years, and we don't even know what the projected revenues are going to be. We're too busy trying to change language. Yes, sir.
But also, in regards to that too, is what's the impact on jobs and wages that this change is going to have?
Mr. Mayor, actually, if I could ask Mallory Kaler to add one more person to come to the podium, she can give you a little background on how this developed and what the original intent was, what the business plan was, and, you know, why it's taken this long, and how it was anticipated it would take a number of years before it would be developed for full operation.
Sure.
And before you get started, Mallory, I think what Councilman Moody asked was valid. I mean, this thing is about what kind of revenue the city is looking at, what Dr. Wood just talked about with jobs and all that. And if we don't make that a viable part of the conversation, I mean, it makes me more suspicious that we're trying to change language to crush concrete and don't even know what we're going to yield out of it. I mean, so, and when I talked with him, I think it was about 20 or 30 jobs for the grain piece. And he was supposed to have been over in Virginia Beach, and he was bringing most of those folks there, and he was going to hire the remainder of the folks right here in Portsmouth. This is for the grain piece. And that revenue, and again, I haven't talked to him or anybody else in the last two years, and about a year and a half ago, when this new business model jumped in, and we all started attacking language and all of that, so we could get him to crush it. I mean, I just lost, I haven't seen any projections of what we're going to make in this. Do you have any of that, or you just want to add to the story?
I'd be glad to give you an overview, and then I have some of those particulars that I can pull up. I don't have them on my iPad, I have them on my desktop, and we'll bring them. I do know the applicant is here this evening and will be available for questions during the public hearing, and we'll have all the particulars that perhaps I cannot address. The Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission sold this property in 2010 to PER. The initial development was projected to be a granary with a concrete facility to go onsite in preparation for building the granary. We all knew that it would take a number of years to develop the facility, because, coincidentally, the super fund redevelopment that the EPA is doing is taking place, they're putting up the wall, they're dumping all the horrible spoils out of the bottom of the riverbed and capping it, and that has an impact on this 16 acres that this property owner acquired from the PPIC. So what they're doing has had to trail behind the schedule of the EPA. So, that gives you a sense of the timeline. They did come in in 2013 and discuss the idea, as has been shared, of keeping the concrete facility in a permanent capacity. It is a piece of property on the waterfront. The PPIC, for the years that it had owned it and been marketing it, had always said that it wanted a port-related entity, somebody who would utilize the waterfront there. And this brought another opportunity for additional port-related activity outside of the granary business. And I know our chairman of the PPIC is with us here this evening, and he is also available for questions. And so the PPIC, excuse me, was in support of having the city staff explore that opportunity. And then our staff has shared, other matters came up that had to do with things like access and screening, and issues and definitions of uses. I do have the original...
So how much of that site Mallory is grain? How much does he want to use for crushing concrete of the 16 acres? Is it half and half, or?
I don't know the specifics without having the site plan in front of me, and I'd have to defer to the applicant and pull up the application on the site. Planning may have that in the, I've got it electronically, not in paper in front of me.
That'll be part of the presentation at 7:00 P.M.
Okay. And the jobs...
And we will, we will pull up the press release that we issued with the capital investment and the jobs generation from the original announcement in 2010, and I'll defer to the applicant.
But that's just the grain. We now want to know what we're going to do if we crush concrete.
I'll defer to the applicant to help us with that information for the additional positive impact.
So we'll let the applicant, and we're going to vote on something, and we don't know whether or not what he's sharing with us is possible or not. We're going to wait and let the applicant this evening and say, oh, we're going to add another 20 jobs, and we're going to bring in a million bucks, and we're going to vote yes, and nobody's going to flush out whether or not that's a true statement or even plausible.
We'll provide you what we know tonight.
And we're going to vote tonight on that, and we don't know.
I believe this is the first hearing, the public hearing, and the first vote?
Public hearing and first reading, though. Public hearing and first reading, though. We can certainly provide you more detailed information for the second reading.
I'm just curious, how much was the property sold, for how much was the property sold, the 16 acres?
Let me check my press release and pull it up online when I get to my desktop and bring that to you all at the 7 o'clock meeting. I don't have that memorized.
Fair enough. Okay, thank you.[1710.13]